Welcome to the September seventeenth, or excuse me.
October first.
That was the minutes, October first meeting of 2024 of the Wyndham City Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Welcome, everyone, and this meeting is now called to order. And the consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the following. City Council minutes of September 17th and 24th of September. Library Board minute, September 10th. Telecom Commission, September 16th. EDA Commission, that was a special meeting, September 23rd. The license and applications that are included are the exempt gambling permit. Wyndham Youth Hockey Association, that's December 18th. Exempt gambling permit, bark, November 19th. A temporary liquor permit, one day temporary. Consumption and display permit, Wyndham Area Chamber of Commerce, that is October 9th. The location is going to be Shannon Lynn's Boutique and Floral. Also included are the regular bills. Council wish to take action or have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion, Dennis, second, Jim, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Department heads. And John is going to come up.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. I wanted to update the council that in just over a month, we have our holiday wine tasting event at the community center. So it's November 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Hope, we're still lining up a few vendors, but most of them have confirmed from last year. So it'll be another big event. Last year was a lot of success and looking to have another good year with it, so. At the community center.
Did you forget that? Oh, wow. I didn't catch that, John. Thank you, John. Any other department heads? Otherwise, I think they'll wait till later when they're needed, right? Okay. Next, we have Wyndham Police Department swearing in of two new officers. And I will, I guess, come up here. I think that if you'll speak loud, I think everybody will be able to hear you and we'll be okay. I think the easiest way is for you to repeat after me. It's fairly short. Thank you. Police Officer of, I, Daniel Gardner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. Yeah, I'm gonna actually just.
There we go.
Okay, how's that?
That works. I, Daniel Gardner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of peace officer to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team of the Wyndham Fire Department. Good job.
Police Department.
Police Department. You said, you said fire. The blue ones are police. If you want to do double duty on this. You want to have him sign that? Daniel, you want to sign that? Steve, were you gonna take the copy of that too? Or will the chief take care of that? And is there anything you'd like to say through the, through the mic or for the public? Hey, turn around, speak to the public here.
Thanks, I'm excited to work for the police department and get things going, yeah.
Good job. Ethan, welcome. Congratulations. As you can see, it's up here.
I, Ethan Palmer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota.
I, Ethan Palmer, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a peace officer to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Not a fire department.
No, not fire department, I'm sorry. I think they have about six on their list tonight, so, yep.
Doesn't matter if it said Dan.
We got you. Yes, Steve will correct it. Yeah. Okay, now it's your chance. You're in front of the crowd here and we welcome you aboard. Few words?
Thank you for the support for coming out. Something new, I guess.
And thanks to the chief for shortening this up a little bit. There we go. Okay. Welcome aboard, guys. A lot of our crowd has left.
Okay, Donna Farkelson, Finance Director. Wasn't that long ago I was here asking for authorization to solicit for RFP for auditors. Schlenner Wener had a three-year engagement with the city that expired after the completion of our 23 audit. We were authorized to solicit proposals from firms for the next three or five years. And RFP was sent out to a number of firms and it was also advertised on the League of Minnesota site. We received three requests for additional information, but we only received one proposal and that was from Clifton Larson Allen, who has done the city's audit prior to Schlenner Wener. So as a follow-up to the RFP, I did speak with Craig Poppenhagen from CLA and they do plan to be on-site for inventory verification and possibly four days on-site for the first year. And then the next two years, they would plan three or four days on-site, which would include that liquor store inventory. So that's a little out of the norm for the last since, since COVID. Audits have usually been off, you know, they've stayed in their office and it's all online. So I think this will be a positive to be able to have them on-site, especially for this first year. So I guess the recommendation would be to accept the audit proposal from CLA for the 24, 25, and 26 audits.
Okay, we'll see if we have any council comments. I just do have one to acknowledge that, well, for one thing, they have been, worked for us before and have completed the audits. Also that they are, as I understand it, the auditing firm of the hospital. Okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So just wanted to make them points. I asked Steve if there was any conflict and he said no. There's no conflicts with that. You agree with that?
I do, I think actually it would be, make both audits go easier when they need to combine those. Yeah.
Very good. Council comments?
When was the completion date they expected to do our audits?
They have a schedule in that RFP. I can grab it off the table here quick if you want to know, but I think it, I think it was April. There.
Is it during presentation?
Presentation to this being.
Correct.
The field work and things start in January with their interim audit work and then you can see through their graph that they would then do their onsite and report to management and then tie it up by June. That's kind of when we expect these to be done. There is a state audit report that needs to be filed on the 30th of June just to make sure that everybody gets their audits done. And then the hook on that is if you don't turn that state audit report in, you get on the auditor's naughty list and then they can withhold your local government aid payment if it's not done by, I think, September 15th or 1st or someplace in there. And so we're playing nip and tuck with that this year with the auditor, but we did have everything done on time and we're in good shape, so.
Steve or Donna, do you know off the top of your head what the cost was? I believe it was around $75,000? Is that what I remember?
It's $68,965 for the first year. Seventy-two, two forty, so, oh, he's got it up there.
Yeah, I was remembering the third year, I guess. So, okay.
I, I did see there, they, they put in a proposal when Schlenner Wener did three years ago. Yeah, it was significantly lower. But I think the shortage of staff in this area in auditing has drove the prices up quite a bit.
Okay. Yeah, the cost, I guess I was going to ask that question of the comparison to prior years and I know it's, it's went up. We're budgeted for that, I'm guessing, Steve, within reason?
We, yeah, we tried to get some of it in and a number of it, you know, it's a divide up between a number of departments, so it's not one large impact, but it is significantly higher than our last three-year engagement. And I think that was part of the reason our prior auditors were working on, they shortened our engagement. It was supposed to be a five-year engagement, they shortened it to three just because they couldn't find staff, one and two. I think they were probably losing money a little bit on it just due to the inflationary costs of audits and staffing, so.
Other questions from the council? Okay. Hearing none. A motion would be in order to accept the recommendation and the proposal for the three-year engagement.
I'll make the notion, motion to accept the proposal for the three years.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jenny. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Donna.
Yep, thank you.
We have a county engineer here today. So is Nick going to explain this whole bridge replacement project? Okay, sounds good. You get the hot seat, Nick. There's a button to push if you're asked any questions. And I guess we want Nick to just give the review of the project and where we're at today.
Do you have to hold it though? Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Yeah, I'm here today, we have actually two projects. They will be under, let under one contract, but the big, big one here is probably the most anticipated bridge as far as county bridges are concerned for replacement. The bridge over the Des Moines River by the Wyndham Country Club was, we completed the design and we received state bridge bond funds for that structure. Covers 50% of the structure. And so that project is a goal. We, we won't start construction immediately because we have a upstream, we are doing, excuse me, another bridge over the Des Moines that will start here probably in a month or two. It should be winter construction on County Road 14. And we don't want to close those both at the same time, obviously, since there's not too many river crossings west of town. Additionally, west of the bridge, west of town, we're going to replace the pavement next year. Anticipate on starting that earlier in the year, May or June. Upon completion of that, then we would begin hopefully construction on this bridge. And so why I'm here tonight is, per state aid rules, whenever the county does a project within city limits, we ask for municipal consent. And so coupled with this bridge project, just a small portion of the bridge is actually in city limits. But you could see on your resolution here, there's actually two project numbers. We will also be reconstructing the road from the bridge east to River Road along the country club there. And when we rebuild that road, we will widen it, put eight-foot shoulders on. We'll put some curb and gutter in front of the homes there. So I think that will be a nice improvement for the community. I know a lot of folks walk and bike on River Road. This will be an avenue to the golf course. The new bridge will also be wider, it will have eight-foot shoulders. So, you know, if folks wanted to continue west out of town, they'll have wide shoulders across the bridge, but then they will narrow down to narrower shoulders again west of the bridge. So I guess that's, that's what we have. The, the plans for, for the road project between the bridge and River Road are just preliminary now. I did include a layout, but there's not a lot to that, I don't think. I should mention that there will be a cost to the city utilities in this stretch. There's street lighting there. So removal and replacement of the street lighting will be the city's costs if you wish to keep those there. I think we can remove the foundations with the project. But talking to Jason, he didn't think the lighting would be a big deal to handle in-house with his staff. Other than that, the project will be 100% funded by the county, so we won't be asking for any contribution from the city.
Well, Marv will let you go first.
Do you have a timeline on that, Nick?
So, like I said, we kind of got a couple of projects we have to get out of the way first. I think it'll be probably at least six months before we can start narrowing down a time. Once that bridge, the bridge on County Road 14 gets going, we should have a pretty good idea when that is going to finish. And then that'll give us an idea when we can begin the surfacing project. My hope would be that we could get going on this bridge August 2025, maybe even July, depending on how the surfacing goes. But we try not to tighten the timeline too much because that sometimes increases costs, so we try to keep it open. It could trickle into 2026. So a possibility is if we don't get a start on it next year, they could opt for maybe winter construction on the bridge and then complete the bridge kind of in the spring and then do the road portion in like early 26. But we don't, we don't have that defined quite yet.
How long does it take to replace a bridge like that?
So the last large one we did was over the Des Moines on County Road 7 by Tulcott Lake. That one, they actually got started in August and they got it completed in October. But that was, I mean, a pretty aggressive schedule for them. That was the case where contractor, we, we gave them the option and contractors needed work for that fall, so they jumped on it and, yep.
That seems pretty fast.
Yeah. If you have good conditions, you can go quickly, but you know, the conditions in the river change quickly sometimes.
One comment that I was going to make, it says and is municipal consent. We've had that issue before, right, Steve? With municipal consent, but I, I think this is a good kind of consent. I think it'll, it's a needed update to the county roads. It sounds like you have the utility stuff worked out with the electric department, right, Jason? So we're.
Sorry, I probably should have called you first, Jason.
Yeah.
We talked about it about two years ago, if you remember.
Right, okay. Just so that gets passed on to Utility Commission and so they're aware of that too. And Scott, you're pointing like you got a question.
There's a few houses out there. How do you plan on getting people in and out of their driveways when you tear that road up? Because that's, there's no side road or anything like that out in that way. And then you got your golfers out there, how are they going to get in or on that stuff?
So, yeah, that'll be the contractor's responsibility to maintain access, but it'll be similar to like when you do a street project. There'll be gravel surfacing will remain and if there's any drop-offs, they'll have to make ramps and whatnot. I do expect that portion of the project to go pretty quickly. I mean, it's a pretty short stretch, so I don't anticipate that, that timeframe of the project being too long.
I believe our water and sewer were in good condition. Is that correct?
That, that's, to my, yeah, to my knowledge, you know, when I, a year or two ago, I, that, that's what I was told, so. But if you do, if the city does have any needs under the roadway that need addressing, let me know. There's still time to get those incorporated into the plan. I think actually some of the sewer and water aren't even under the road. Maybe they're on the north side, could be.
And we did the sewer probably in 2006, '07, '08, someplace in there, right along Country Club Drive. So I know we did it in that timeframe.
Just a question. Yeah. Okay, anything further? Okay, council, you have a resolution approving Cottonwood County. Let me see. Municipal consent form.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this consent form for number 15.
I will second the resolution.
Resolution was introduced by Dennis and seconded by Jenny. Is there any further discussion? One more time, any further, Jenny?
That 14, is that out to, by you out there? The gravel road? When you were talking about County Road 14 Bridge, where is that located?
Yes, it is northwest, so if you continue on River Road west of town, it's the gravel approximately across four goes north. It, it's a little east, but goes, yeah, it goes west, but there's two bridges on County Road 14. There's one right by River Road. That's not the one we're doing. We're doing one that's about three miles west. That's where the river bends and comes back around, so.
I think that's the only wooden bridge left in Cottonwood County.
Oh, no, we got a few more.
Okay. Any other questions, Jenny?
I just think this is one time where we're going to agree on a municipal consent and we're going to have the county, you know, agreeing to fund this and I don't think we're going to have anybody coming back later in the future telling us this price for the city is going to go up a ton. So thank you very much for agreeing to this and sticking with this.
Good comment. Anything further? Okay, Steve, I'll ask for a roll call. Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
And that carries, thank you, Nick.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Okay, next, we have the residential property tax abatement application. This is 2025, Cottonwood Lake Drive. And this will just simply be the call for public hearing. Steve, are you giving the introduction on this? I don't see Tiffany here.
Yep, she asked me to do it. As you stated, this is just for setting a public hearing. The applicants, Dave and Mary Lee Strom, are rebuilding out at Cottonwood Lake Drive. They have submitted an application for the program. The council, or the, I'm sorry, the county did set the public hearing this morning. The anticipated value of the home does exceed the $320,000 cap, so it will be capped at the $320,000 valuation for the abatement. The approximate value of the abatement will be $1,844 a year with a five-year total of approximately $9,220. So the action requested this evening is to set the public hearing for October 15th and that would then be held at your next meeting.
First, does the council have any questions? Okay. We would need a motion to approve.
I would introduce this resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed tax abatement for the new residential project.
I'll second it. Resolution was introduced by Jenny and seconded by Scott. Any further questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, Steve. Thank you. Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Grunig. Resolution carries. We'll have more on that next meeting. Liquor store. John's got quite an event coming up for the sixth annual MMBA Fire Department fundraising.
Past event. John Nelson, liquor store manager. So August 1st to September 11th, we ran our sixth annual MMBA Fire Department fundraiser. It's one of the three big community involvement activities that we do. This is done to help cities promote the community value of their municipal liquor store operations through the MMBA in partnership with Molson Coors. This ran August 1st to September 11th to help raise additional money for local fire departments that are in need, that are running on very tight budgets. So I'm here tonight to report the results from the promotion. So the first thing that we did, this is the second year we did this, we did a pallet of beer raffle. So I worked with the Wyndham Fire Department Relief Association to handle the gambling permit. We had 1,000 tickets printed at $10 apiece. I believe there is maybe just a handful of tickets out between firefighters right now, but I would guess 99% of them are sold out. So that drawing will take place Sunday, October 13th at the pancake breakfast that the fire department does as part of the open house during Fire Prevention Week. So that was another good event there. This year, something new, Molson Coors had printed some special edition fire boots. So we used those at the register to collect cash donations for the Wyndham Fire Department Relief Association. In those boots, just over $50 was collected and I ended up turning that money over to the Wyndham Fire Department Relief Association already. The third thing is on July 2nd, the city council approved to do a fund transfer donation based off a portion of sales of Coors Banking and Coors Light during this promotion period. For that, for every dollar, for every 24-pack sold, 75 cents for every 15 or 18-pack, 50 cents for every nine-pack or 12-pack and a quarter for every six-pack resulted. um, resulted in a transfer amount of six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, so that transfer will need to be approved by the city council. Um, last year, that amount was six hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. I believe on the next page of the council packet is the breakdown of, of how many items of each package were sold. Um, as you can tell, we sold two hundred and sixteen, the big items were two hundred and sixteen cases of Coors Light during that, um, month and a third, um, along with a hundred and ninety-seven cases of the twenty-four pack sixteen ounce can. So, um, that was a big portion of the transfer amount. Um, in total, there was nine hundred and one units of just Coors Banquet and Coors Light sold during the month, so.
Just a comment, that's a lot of Coors.
And that's just the Coors Light.
So, uh, very good. Thank you for all the, the programs. Um, do we do our transfer now at this meeting?
You approved it in July, correct?
Or you already have?
They approved to do it. I don't know if we specifically need to approve the amount or not.
Yes, we did last year, I think that'd probably be prudent to do again.
Would you, uh, tell us that amount once again?
Six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to be transferred from the liquor store fund to the fire department general fund to offset equipment purchases.
Is there a motion to that effect? I'll make a motion for the transfer of the monies to the prepared people.
I will second.
That motion, I won't repeat it, but it was by Scott and seconded by Jenny. It's, it's what he said.
Approve the transfer of six, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents from the liquor fund to the general fund to the Wyndham Fire Department.
Thank you. Any discussion?
That's what Scott said?
No, I, that's what I thought he heard. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thanks for all you're doing, for your help. Okay. Uh, personnel. Marv, are you handling this as chairman of personnel? Are we gonna let Steve take care of it? Good, good choice, Marv. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Marv, um, there's a letter in the packet from Todd Severson. Uh, Todd is our building official. Uh, he was, uh, kinda coming up on his six months, and, uh, came in the office last week and said that the position just really has, isn't for him. It just wasn't a good fit for him. Um, so he, uh, submitted resignation. Um, that is in your packet, so I'd like, uh, some council action to accept, uh, the resignation as a department head. Um, also want to let you know that, uh, when we, uh, did the interviews and we advertised for this six months ago, uh, we did have three other applicants that were interested. I have contacted all three of those folks to let them know the job is open again. Um, two of them have returned my phone call. Uh, I've not heard from the third person. I have also placed an ad in the paper and put it in the League of Minnesota Cities, um, magazine or online for an ad as well. So that is in process and moving. So, um, if you take action to accept Todd's, then I'll kinda tell you a little bit about our coverage in the interim.
Okay, let's take, uh, care of Todd's.
I'd make the motion to approve Todd Severson's resignation.
I'll second it.
That motion by Marv, uh, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion on that? Scott?
I'd like to say thank you to Todd for the, the time that he did spend here. We know this is a tough job for anybody to take over, and you gotta know if it's right for you or not. So I'm glad he decided what was right for him and his family, and just, I wanna thank him for the time he did spend with us.
Very good, thank you, Scott. Any further? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that motion carries, Steve?
Uh, so for the interim, um, Andy Spielman, our former building official, was, is under contract, uh, has been helping out Todd as he was working towards getting his license. Um, I, and Todd had talked to Andy prior to his submission of the resignation. Um, and then before I had a chance to call Andy, he called me and said he would be willing to continue to help out on a limited basis doing inspections. Um, I'd also mentioned we're gonna reach out to Steve Carson. Steve Carson is a retired building official, but he still has an active license. He does mountain lakes inspections, uh, he pitch hit for when Andy was on vacation, that kinda thing. Um, and, uh, before I could get ahold of Steve, Andy and Steve had already talked and said, "We will, um, kinda work together and try to keep your inspections moving along." Um, and Steve Carson also knows another retiree that has an active license, and so he said between the two of them, if they need another hand, they might have another guy to pull in to kinda help us bridge the transition. So hopefully that'll go as quick as we can. Um, I'd say fortunately, but we're coming up on the time of year where some of the inspections slow down a little bit when the winter weather comes. Uh, I know a lot of people are still working on flood stuff and hospitals still going, there's some big projects, so. Um, but I'm hoping we're covered in the transition by those folks, and certainly, big thanks to Andy and Steve Carson for helping us out in that transition.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Uh, with that, let's move on to hiring. Wyndham Police Department, Ben is here.
Fire Department.
What did I say, please?
Yep.
You guys get me, uh.
Thank you for our blue shirts, too, that's, you're confusing.
It's been a long day.
Ben Erickson, Wyndham Fire Chief. I'm here to ask for your approval to hire six new firefighters for our department. About twelve weeks ago, I came in and we discussed putting on new firefighters at that time. You guys gave me the, the approval, I believe, at that time to put four to five on. We had eight applicants, six of them went through the trial process. With the, with the, uh, trial process, we put them through six physical fitness tests, two written tests, and an oral interview. They all scored and ranked very well and performed very well. All these candidates did an extremely well job, or extremely good job. Actually, we had a really hard time trying to pick five. We, and kinda where I'm at on this is I've got one of these applicants that's already firefighter one and two certified and trained already. So he would essentially cost us nothing to put him on. So that's kinda the way that myself and the assistant chiefs are approaching this, to putting six on instead of five. I, I guess with that, I, I have a list of the six that I'm proposing, which is Blake Hall, Tim Hogan, Jake McCormick, Tyler Morgan, Zach Rabby, and Brian Turner.
I think I'll go right to questions. I'll start. Uh, do you have an estimate on, uh, like their turnout gear and everything that's needed in excess of what you currently have? Is there a cost that we should know about?
Um, I've looked through the, the gear that we have. Um, obviously, I have gear to get them in, to get them through their training and that type of stuff. Um, before they would start doing, or actually going into fires and that type of stuff, they'd have to have, have to be put into newer gear. For those six firefighters, I think I have gear for four of them. So we're looking at potentially having to buy two sets. Now, I don't need complete sets because I have extra hoods, helmets, gloves, and stuff like that. So we potentially need two sets of, of turnout gear, the pants, the coats, and the boots. Estimated cost, my guess is probably gonna be about four thousand dollars for those two sets.
Okay, which I think is a good investment if you have six people that are willing to step up and be part of our fire department. I, I hope the council agrees in that, uh, the council takes action to hire as requested, uh, to become part of that fire department group, or the six candidates. Council wish to take action on the request?
I'll make a motion to hire of the six.
I would second.
Okay, uh, that was, uh, motion by Jim and a second by Marv. Now, any discussion or comments council wish to make?
Ben, I'm just glad that we got the people that you want on this job to do the job that you need to and getting the help that you need. Cause just to get firefighters or police officers to come to a small town to help out wherever needed is, is a big job, and I wanna thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'm glad you found six. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, thank you, Ben.
Thank you, guys. I will inform them and they will have their first drill Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have another resignation. Um, Steve works, uh, really closely with the, uh, airport board and I'll let you take it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so unfortunately, we had another resignation. Now, this is a retirement. Uh, Brian Underwood has, uh, been working out at the airport for well over thirty years. Yeah, um, on, he was on and off a little bit, but, um, he's been here the entire time that I've been here in nearly twenty years. And so he was just getting to the point where he had some things to do on the farm and was getting up there, and it was time to make a change, so he, uh, is retiring from his duties. Uh, he went out and helped me today, get a couple of fuel reports off the computer, things like that. So he's willing to help out a little bit there. Um, this really isn't a, a city employee position, it's more of a stipend. That's the way it's been set up and the way it's been running for, you know, well over, um, my tenure as well. And so, um, I did ask Brian if he knew of anybody that might be willing to come out and take this on. It's doing the mowing, taking care of the building, you know, answering the phone. If pilots come in, they have trouble with fuel system, or they wanna use the courtesy car, they need to get into a hangar, you know, in case of inclement weather, or, you know, just make sure the A W O S and the lights are running and things like that. So it's fairly, you know, um, complex and can be a demanding job. Um, so he was gonna think about it and see if he could come up with any pilots or anybody that might be interested in it, cause having that general aviation knowledge is certainly a benefit. Um, I did reach out to a couple of folks. One, uh, told me no, um, thought about it and said, "No, they're not willing to do it, they're retiree." Um, so it's a kinda good job for them, but, uh, they didn't see it quite as, uh, as the way I did. Um, I did reach out to a second person and they are thinking about it. So hopefully, we have somebody that's got some interest on it. In the meantime, um, I'm running out doing some checks on it. Street department guys are out doing the mowing and that kinda stuff. So, uh, we're gonna keep the wheels on, so to speak, out at the airport, but, um, keep the wings on, keep it underway, that kinda thing, so. Um, so that's what's going on there, so right now, I'll just kinda be looking that way. If you know of anybody or anybody's got some interest in it, please, you know, send that to myself, um, so we can get some discussion going. Um, there are fixed-based operators in other communities, and, um, so I was thinking about reaching out to them, but they are full-time employees typically of other airports, and it's tough to take on another smaller airport, but, um, that may be a, an avenue that we pursue as well, but. So just wanted to let you know what's going on there.
Council have any questions? I guess the one, one thing is, should it be a, a salaried position or something for council discussion? Or not enough?
If you wanna have that discussion, I think you have personnel committee, and if you wanna talk about it. But right now, I was kinda just working on filling it as it had been. Um, cause it's really kind of ad hoc. It's, you know, go out when it needs to be mowed, go when it needs to snow. You know, there's not a lot of day-to-day type of activities and duties, and it can be very sporadic. It can be evenings, could be morning, could be a weekend, could be a weekday at noon, you know, it just kinda all over the place.
Guess the point I'm getting at, we're gonna miss Brian taking care of everything.
Greatly, he, he was a tremendous asset out at the airport.
Yeah, and, and Brian, I don't know if you watch city council meetings, but we sure appreciate all your, uh, past work out there and your, your, uh, continuation for how many years?
Thirty.
Thirty years? That's quite a commitment, uh, and, you know, the airport's a big deal. And, uh, um, many people count on it, uh, local residents, um, so, yeah. Uh, so once again, thanks to Brian, and I suppose that we should, uh, uh, accept the resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Brian for the airport manager.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jim to, uh, approve the, uh, the resi- retirement, Steve said. That sounds better than a resignation of our current airport management, manager, Brian Underwood. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, just to make a point, Steve is salaried, he will not get the stipend to go out and mow and all that stuff and the field records.
I kinda wanted to mow, but I didn't get the opportunity, the street department beat me out there.
John, you're up again. Hiring recommendation.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. I'm here, uh, to recommend a council of a non-union, part-time liquor store clerk. Um, on August sixth, um, you, the city council, um, approved the hiring of two, um, employees. Um, before I could get the other, the se- the second employee hired, um, he took another job with another area municipal liquor store for more pay. Um, and so that left us shorthanded there, and then I had another employee turn in, uh, resignation notice. Um, luckily, um, with another one out for the next month, um, she extended her notice and is helping us out for the month of October. Um, so we went back through the previous applications we had on file. Um, I did another interview, and I'm recommending the hire of Kylie Johnson. Um, it is recommended to hire Kylie, um, as a part-time, non-union liquor store clerk at a wage of twelve seventy-five, which is in accordance with the non-union part-time wage si- scale approved by the Wyndham City Council on January sixteenth.
What sort of liquor committee, you think? Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to accept the non-union clerk hiring position.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by, uh, Scott, seconded by Jenny to approve the hiring of Kylie. Forgot the last name, Johnson, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Uh, we are still kinda looking to fill one more position. Um, I'm not sure if I quite wanna advertise yet. Um, we're kinda trying to get some people from word of mouth. Um, so if anyone's looking for a nice part-time job with some major flexibility, uh, stop in or fill out an application and we will get that processed.
Thank you, John. Contractor payments, uh, generation, uh, plant. And Jason is coming up to the podium. Are we at final completion yet?
Jason Secar, Electric Utility Manager. Uh, so we got the eleventh contractor payment for the generation plant. This brings us up to eighty-nine percent, um, which is about where we're at. We are looking at, well, we're hoping to hit substantial completion on Friday. So, um, they are finalizing some of the systems today, fuel, DEF, um, air compressor, working through some of those bugs that are coming up, but being taken care of. So I, I believe, I believe we'll make it. So, it's looking very nice. Everything's getting painted up. Everything's getting cleaned up. So, should have Ziegler starting the other part of their contract next week of getting to start up and all that stuff going on. So...
Okay, one contract of many through this whole process. What we have before us is payment number eleven to Wilcon Construction Services LLC, an amount of three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Is that in?
I'd make a motion to approve that payment.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny. Any discussion? Has this went to your utility commission already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that carries. We are down to new business. Anyone? Steve, anything that you can think of? Well, old business. The council and residents are able to view the response letter from Mindot, which was not positive at all. It basically said, do you get what we said before? Is we're studying, they are studying, according to the letter, they're studying the request, I guess, going back to four lane on South Highway sixty. And they're saying that you still have the option that District Seven gave us to wait a year until we can finance it for the over four hundred thousand dollar streetlight share. We're not happy with that, nor should the council be. The question I have then for the council are next steps. If the council has any thoughts, I think, this is just my opinion, that the commissioner probably honestly should, she had a discussion with Mindot, okay? And I believe they had a discussion. I'm sure it was, I would say it's probably was a one-sided conversation. But, you know, we're up against this and does the council wish to have input on the next step? And I'm asking you for your ideas or thoughts. But we can continue to press this. I think the council, in the previous letter that, on the council's behalf, we sent to, and their residents, sent to the commissioner, and we're not happy with the answer. It was same old stuff. Dennis, I'm sure you have comments.
I do. I'd just like to remind the council that a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar amount would amount to over a sixteen percent in the increase of our levy in one, if it was done in one year. Think about that. That's crazy. No way am I going to support it. No way.
Dennis, I'm having Steve do the math in that just to see the...
I got it from Steve.
It is, it's sixteen point four.
Sixteen point four.
Yep.
Okay, so...
I got it from Steve.
Well, and I thank you for checking in on that. I think it's good to know that comparisons. Scott, you had a question?
Have we heard anything back from our legislator people that we've reached out to yet? And can we go above them if we have to with some more letters or something? Because we can't just accept this. Because if we roll over and take this, what more is coming down the road to us?
I think you're on the right track. And I guess that legislatively is how we'll have to go about this, I believe. You know, and because, you know, that response was from the commissioner. And so, the commissioner's not going to ask the governor what he thinks, in my opinion. They are a commissioner of transportation or agriculture, whatever their commissioner of, that's their job to answer these type of situations. And I understand our commissioners will stick up for staff of the state of Minnesota. And we just in Wyndham, Minnesota, do not agree with the process they went through to come up with this. I think that's the problem. And, you know, where's the oversight for these people? Usually, it's their boss. The boss is the commissioner. And so, you know, this will be a, I think it needs to go to our legislators, legislators. They need to work on our behalf. They need to understand factual information. You know, they've been copied in on this information. But they're also, you know, busy too. So, it's now we have to request, I believe, is the help of our senator and representative from our area to take the next steps. I would recommend that Steve invite them for a discussion and we get some, a process started. I'd like to hear from them on the process for next steps. Is that reasonable? Steve, is that the process we should?
I think you probably could invite them in for a discussion. I mean, if you're going to have it, have it as part of your council meeting so that you've then got it out there. Yeah, for, also for the public's involvement and information. So, probably the second meeting of November. The first meeting is election night and that's not the time to do it. And right now, it's kind of maybe a shorter window for them to do some of their research and homework and get some of the information. So, I think if we aim for that second meeting in November, if you're open to that, we'll do that. We can draft a letter requesting them. Do you want to invite Mindot to the meeting as well? Or is this a...
If they want the opportunity to be here, I would welcome that.
Well, I'm just asking because I know you're going to have me do it.
That's, council, what's your wishes on that?
I think it's the one, yeah.
And then, we'll pack this joint. Listen, we can have standing room only in here. That'll work. And then, if we don't get satisfaction in my back pocket, let's have a phone call contest and make calls to Mindot. You know, that seems childish, but I believe they've heard the voice of our residents. And I think they're united. I think the council now needs to carry this. And move this forward. Steve, comments, guidance?
Well, and then after you have your discussion with legislators, you know, then it's the holiday, December, and then you will have a new legislative session starting in twenty-five. And so, that would be the time then for them, those folks, to put the pressure on it at that point. So, I think that flows fairly well, just given the process.
I think so, too. I think from a safety standpoint, too, that we have to be, we have to restore four lanes to South Wyndham. This previous accident is very bothersome to me and a very serious situation. And had there been four lanes there, I don't think it would ever happened.
Do you realize that that accident happened the day after you guys authorized us to write the letter? So... Yep, okay. So, we have a plan? Everybody consent to that?
I'll make a motion to have Steve read a letter to the legislators and anybody that will listen.
Well, inviting the legislators and...
Yes, yes, yes.
November fifteenth city council meeting on this issue.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
And if there's a change in that, elected official Steve, I think you'd extend that to the, to a different one.
To the elect.
To the elect. Okay. That was a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Now, a comment?
You said a study. They're still wanting to leave it like it is with the lanes?
They are...
Didn't we go through that with them? That they were supposed to remove all the lines?
In your response to Mindot on municipal consent, the one that also said that we would participate at the cost that was mentioned, in that same consent was in the council position was to move that back to four lane. Period. You know, they responded with correspondence saying they are studying now the impact of moving it back. They're looking at crash studies to see what happened during it. It's been like, what, two years? And it's failed miserably, in my opinion. A lot of close calls, different things. How do people that come through that are not residents of our community have any idea what's happening? Because I'm sorry, folks, but people don't read all the signs. They sure as heck don't look at the speed limits. They need to back that thing up further south. Now, I'm getting on a rampage, but, okay. But, and I think we are all in this together. I feel strongly that the council as a whole will stick together and fight for what the residents said, all of us.
Is there any possibility we could even get QuickTrip, you know? I see a lot of semis that already are turning to go on seventy-one towards Jackson and they come in that other driveway. It's easier for them. So, to me, it would make, I don't know.
Yeah, sense to get them involved. They're the one who approved it, you know, the way it was. I don't know. It's, the thing is, is there was a similar, very similar business at that intersection prior to QuickTrip. Yes, there's probably more traffic going in and out, but there was the same conditions there. Anyway, end of my thing.
And a lot of local residents support QuickTrip. I mean, there's a lot of money spent out there from Wyndham residents. So, I don't know. There's got to be something, somebody with some damn common sense, I would think, somewhere along the line. Do they want to keep getting their precipitation from us? Or, you know, I don't know.
If Mindot is here, they're going to hear strongly from me again.
Bring a baseball bat.
No, I think, no, and we can be as cordial as we can.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you got to state the facts. You got to state what we're hearing from the public, you know, and be courteous. You'll notice in the letter and correspondence, people are cordial. Is it what we really want to say? Maybe not all of it. But that's how the process should work. And, you know, so, we'll get through it. Council will get through it. Wyndham will get through it. And hopefully, it comes out. And maybe there's a hybrid between the two that we're not thinking of. But that's Mindot's job.
I'm very confident that our legislators would agree with us on that being four lane over what it is now. I'm certain of that. You know, they were, some of them were involved with getting the four lane through to start with.
Yeah, we have past legislators, too, that are very involved with this, that would come and talk. And they have talked on behalf. You know, it was a good day when we sat over there at the new fire hall and we had basically the grand opening of sixty-seventy-one. And we had people that were involved with the start of this whole concept of four lane, you know, there, that, and some had passed away. It took a long time. I cannot remember the years, but it took a long time. And they all sat there and they were so proud of the four lane. And now, we did a test run of a three lane and proved it for Mindot. It's not working. So, our goal is, and it remains that, from this council, as we sit here right now, that we're all on the same page.
I know they brought up all the time, well, Laverne, they did it this way. And people are so happy. But people aren't so happy with it over there either. So, I mean, that is no comparison to what they're trying to do here.
No, and it's about half the traffic over there at Laverne, too. And I actually went over and looked at it after Mindot gave me that recommendation to, yeah, go look at these other communities. This is not Highway sixty-seventy-one. There is a difference. And the volume of traffic, it wasn't quite double. Ours isn't. But, you know, I can't remember the exact road count there, but it was well below ours. And the type of traffic, you look at, that semi-traffic is absolutely crazy coming through town. So, anyway. Well, good discussion, council. I'm glad everybody's behind it together. And the motion is on the table. To proceed with contacting our, Steve's got it down and you made a copy of them, or a note on the motion, correct? That was made by Scott, second by...
Scott, second by Jim to draft a letter inviting local legislators and Mindot for the November fifteenth city council meeting.
And it might be good to have our friend from Mountain Lake. I'm not good on names, but, yeah, see if he'd come again. I'm sure he would.
How many off about highway patrolmen live here in town? You'd think that they would be able to see it out there, just common sense again, but...
I don't know that they're hired by the Department of Transportation. They're hired by the Department of Public Safety. Thank you. Sure, maybe we take a stab at that? Well, stab is the wrong name. Okay, there's a motion on table. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on. Any other, any other old business? Council comments? Who wants to go first? Jim?
I have nothing.
Marv? Dennis? Scott?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, with the farmers out and about moving their equipment through town and the large trucks they're using, the large equipment they're using, just be careful, even out in the community and out in the country. Watch what you're doing and they're doing because they're busy, especially this time of year with everything dry. They're going to try to get as hard as they can. So, just be careful what's going on around you and check on your neighbors, make sure everybody's okay. And have a great day.
Thanks, Jim. Jenny?
From what I was hearing earlier in the meeting, it sounds like October thirteenth, the fire department is having their pancake breakfast at the fire hall. Is that correct? From nine to one. So, nine to one, because that'll be before our next council meeting. Nine to one, October thirteenth, pancake breakfast at the fire department. So, get out to support that. And then, I just want to welcome all our new Wyndham police officers and our new firemen that were brought on tonight. So, thank you very much to all of them. So thank you very much to all of them.
Thanks Jenny. And you got that correct. Police officers and fire department staff. Steve? Nothing. And the mayor has said his piece tonight, so he's going to leave it at that. We're adjourned by unanimous consent. Thank you all for attending.